Okay. All right. Welcome, everyone, to the Aspen City Council Work Session of November 17th. No, it's not the November 17th. It's the one of December 1st. Sorry about that wrong sign. We are having a work session about the compliance and HOA capital reserves of the housing program through APSHA's presentation and study. So it sounds like we're having a little bit of an echo in the room. We'll see if we can get that under control. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Richards, Mayor of the Council. Thanks very much for letting APSHA come talk to you this afternoon. We're going to have presentations by two of our newest members, Jackie Mariano and Emily Mayall. Jackie's going to show the efforts on compliance. Jackie's been with us for a little over two years now, joining us from the FBI. I'm thrilled to have her. We've had a dedicated compliance person for that time, and she's going to walk us through what she got to. And then we have some interesting analysis.
Oh, Matthew, I don't think your red light should be green. Or it should be green, and you might have to repeat yourself for the audience.
I know. Okay.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Good afternoon, everyone. That's better. Good afternoon, everyone. Matthew Gillan, Executive Director of the Aspen Bickin County Housing Authority. Thank you very much for letting us talk to you this afternoon. This afternoon, we have Jackie and Emily, two of our four new staff members. Jackie joined us from the FBI, and she's been in charge of our compliance program for just a little over two years. And Emily joined us last year, and she's our housing policy analyst, and she's going to be walking us through some of the analysis from the capital reserve assessment studies which APSHA paid for last summer for some of the APSHA owners' HOAs. So I think we'll kick off with Jackie.
Great. Thank you so much. We're looking forward to this.
Jackie's just getting ready?
Yeah. I do. Jackie's not technically savvy.
Do we need to hook that up for the computers?
No, we got it ready. She's just, she locked in. She's just pulling it up.
Thank you, dear.
There we go.
Okay. Let me see if I can do a full screen here.
You can turn it.
Yeah, I'll just let you. Thank you. Thank you, dear.
Great.
Okay, very good. Hi, I'm Jackie Maronero. As Matthew said, I joined in April of 2023, and I've been asked to handle the compliance and have it all in one person over at APSHA. Tonight, what we plan on giving you is a high-level view of what we've been doing with compliance since I came, and so effectively since April 1st, 2023. I gave this report to the APSHA Board on October 1st, and I'm sorry, I'm looking for, there we go. We're going to speak in a couple of different areas tonight. We originally gave this report October 1st to the APSHA Board. I haven't updated the data since. We've been extremely busy with the 2025 affidavit, and it's kind of spilling over into compliance now, but was told that these numbers are good enough that we can get an idea of what we've been doing with compliance over at APSHA. As I said, it's a high-level review. We're going to cover a couple of different areas tonight. We're going to talk about what are the open compliance cases. We have a metric on net gain in units. This is something that we began tracking last year. We will also talk about some of the future things that we're going to be doing with compliance, and we'll also talk about what I see are some trends in compliance that I think we should be on the lookout for and we should keep an eye on, because I think when it comes to compliance, it's about notice, and if you don't have no, I'm sorry, I'm going to settle down just for a second.
Slow down, it's all okay.
Compliance consists of good notice, and if you have good notice, then you can have the expectation to have people follow what they're required to do. And so I think when we see some trends occurring, it's important to pull those out and take a look at them and see what we can do to try to get those trends back in more of a compliance area when they're getting away from us. The first slide is, as again, it's a snapshot of, I need to turn some of these little boxes off, I can't see. We did it as of 9:24 for the October 1st meeting, but as of today, there are 21 open compliance cases. That didn't mean that we just added two, that maybe one or two came off and we've put three or four on, but that's where we are trending, is right around under two dozen compliance cases going on. As you can see, this is what we put up on the website, and the data is very clean. We obviously do not want to put anything out there that would give identity to any of the unit holders, and this is pretty vague information, yet it does tell you a little bit about what's going on. Probably most important is violation status. Attorney means that something has passed through our internal compliance actions in APSHA, and now it's with Tom Smith, because for most probably an appeal by the resident, the owner, the tenant, it has gone to district court, and he handles it once it leaves our internal system there. And we have several cases that are pending there. Tom spoke about those in detail before the board two months ago, and those are still matriculating through. This slide talks about what I mentioned earlier, which is compliance actions resulting in a unit net gain. This is a very important metric. We started it last year, as I said, and these are the situations in which a violation has been found. We've issued perhaps a notice of investigation, certainly a notice of violation, and at that point, we are still internal, and we've been able to resolve the issue before going to a hearing officer, before going to court, or getting the attorneys involved. That's really important, because the minute we start getting to appeals that go through the hearing officer, then most deed restrictions go to the board, and then to Tom Smith and outside counsel, it really gets costly, both in terms of money and time. And so as a result of either the NOI, the NOV, or sometimes even a site visit, we can resolve the compliance issues in-house. Honestly, that's the way the system is supposed to work. We have the regulations, both in the regulations that we compile and in the deed restriction, and we need to enforce those. That's where the notice is, and then we get wind of a violation, so we begin our internal process. When we find the violations, we bring it to the attention of the owner. The system works when the owner said, yep, I'm in violation, and then they get to choose to cure it, to sell, or to appeal to the hearing officer. When we can get it resolved at that point, which in these particular metric, it is a sale of the unit, we avoid both the time and expense. In 2024, we started the program, and we had six units turnover. Four of them went to an NOV. It was a forced sale, and they didn't appeal. One was following an NOI, and the third one was an error. The owner of a unit had put in her will that she wanted it to go to her daughter. Her daughter didn't qualify, so she was required to sell the unit. In 2025, we started to get the rhythm of this a little bit better, and we had eight units to date in 2025. I think I can add two, maybe three more before the end of the year that I know of right now. So far in 2025, two of them were NOVs, notices of violation, two were NOIs, which means that we say, this is what's happening. We're going to give you an opportunity to give us your verification if you can and address it, or we're going to go to a notice of violation, and they said, nope, that's okay, we're willing to sell. Two were pre NOI, perhaps a letter from us or some other sort of thing that came about that we were able before we even started the notices. And three came from site visits. And a site visit is something we're required to do according to the deed restriction, where we say to an owner, 24 hours notice in writing, we're going to come to your unit and take a look around, and we have the authority to do that. It's not really a controversial or confrontational type of situation, but they know there's something up, and we're there to check out what's going on in the unit. Those usually arise when we have a situation where we've got a complaint that the person is no longer residing in the unit, or they have 26 of their friends staying in the unit with them, or there are, the owner is gone, and there are other people staying in the unit. It's the hardest violation that we have that we can verify, because you don't often see the comings and goings. So a site visit allows us to go in and take a look around the unit. What it also does is it allows us to get face-to-face with the owner. And when you have that opportunity, you can be very gentle about it and say, look, there's allegations you're not living here. We see in your closets, you don't have a lot of clothes in here. We did one in July, the Christmas tree was still up. The folks were not residing in their unit. And sometimes you can reach a very amicable reason that they kind of have a little come to Jesus and like, yeah, yeah, we've been trying to stay under the radar, and we're no longer under the radar, and they agree to sell. That was really kind of exciting for me, because it was nice to do things that wasn't as adversarial. It was nice to do things on a person-to-person. And honestly, the people usually said, I respect APSHA, what they're doing. APSHA's been great to me, but it's just not working. And so that's been a really good metric. We're going to continue to follow that up, and it's just a good way to do it, because we can really save APSHA and the city and the county a lot of money by handling things that way. The next...
And if I can just add to that, per the Affordable Housing Strategic Plan, APSHA policy actions up to 2028 are expected to reclaim 15 units, and we've done 14 as of the end of 2025. So I think that shows that we're doing a great job on that. If I can just add also on that, Jackie said it, but I'm really going to stress, all these are properties that came back in from the inventory without going to court, without going to the hearing officer, and I don't think you even heard about them. So this happened very smoothly, very quietly. I think it was a situation where Jackie was clearly able to show that the people in the unit were not in compliance, and it happened very smoothly.
Very nice. Thank you.
Thanks, Matthew. This is just a scrubbed, the next slide was just a scrubbed version, taking a look at what, oop, yikes, it can move with my finger. Taking a look at some of the situations that were behind those net turnovers. And...
Yeah, you need to get that back to full screen.
I do. I am so...
He's coming over to help you.
Please invite me back. I'll know this stuff by then. I'm just not, thank you. Okay. When I first came on board in 2023, one of the things we talked about...
Wait, you have to go back to that other slide. Advance.
Here we go.
Oh, I'm sorry, you didn't get a chance to see it.
There we go. Thank you.
So those were the 14 as of October 1st. And as I indicated, I know of two that are probably going to happen before the end of the year that aren't added to this, and potentially a third that we were just discussing this afternoon.
Very nice.
Audit actions. When I came aboard, we have something in the regulations about audits. We have both audits for cause and random audits. And I was asked to sort of put a program together so that we can get something up and running and see what we're looking at. When I came on board two and a half years ago, there was a lot of things happening in the public, in the press, that said, oh, there's so many unqualified people at APSHA, and it's just running rampant. They're not enforcing, they're not doing anything over there. So we said, okay, let's figure out how to do this. So we took all of the owners at the time, a snapshot in time, we anonymized, we randomly put all their last names together, and it spit out an order for us. And then we started just issuing audit letters, and we asked for very simple information. And if you are not familiar enough with the system, the tenants have to renew every two years. But up until now, the owners have had some biennial affidavits, but we haven't requested any documentation. So when we started to put these audits out, we started doing five at a time, and some of the older owners that might have gotten theirs first said, whoa, 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 I haven't talked to APSHA in 20 years. What's going on here? And we're like, that's why we're reaching out to you today. We haven't talked to you in 20 years. This doesn't mean you're doing anything wrong, but we just need a pulse check on our owners. We did that over a series of months, and we got up to 121 audits. And at that point, when we sort of shut down the audit in January of 2024, we were able, sometimes with negotiations, or sometimes right off the bat, we were able to get all but 11 owners back into compliance, or they were already in compliance. That's a fantastic number, and it certainly wasn't reflective of what we were hearing in the public, in the papers, in the gossips around town. And so we felt really strong at that point that, okay, we're good, we got regulations, we're enforcing the deed restriction, now we just need to start putting more information out in the public that we are doing good, we are in compliance, but we are checking on compliance, and everybody's sort of, from an enforcement point of view, be on your toes, because we're going to start paying attention, or at least be more overt about the attention that we're paying. So since then, I reported on October 1st that nine of those 11 have been resolved. One was sold. Five, we continued to work with them and got them back into compliance. And then three more, when we, this was in 2024, and we were working until the summer. So by that time, the remaining ones, we waited until the 2025 affidavit. Three of those people instantly answered the 2025 affidavit, got back into compliance. And we had two that were open that were still waiting on their 2025 affidavits. So we're pleased with how that went, and I think it was kind of a boost interior to APSHA that we are doing things well, and I think maybe it might be a few voices. Doesn't mean there aren't issues, but there were a few voices that were louder than others.
Yeah, one second. I'm just going to add, having familiarity with the program over the past 25, 30 years, plus being an owner, you know, a couple of things. One is, for a long time, APSHA was underfunded as an organization, and part of that was the county didn't have an independent funding source. The city did, but we split the office 50-50. And so we always kind of went along with their numbers, and before Matthew, and even his first few years, it was really being run on a shoestring. So part of that is really kind of coming up to where an agency with this much responsibility, how it should really be staffed. The second point is just, I bought my unit in 1988, so I have a 1988 deed restriction.
Yep.
But you have different deed restrictions throughout time, and so a new owner will have something different than someone in the same building, in the same complex, who's been there a long time. So people, like it or not, they have different rules or not rules, and sometimes neighbors don't understand that, you know, they have a different set of rules than I have, for whatever reason. And I know we're changing those deed restrictions.
Yes.
The incentives and whenever a unit turns over. But that leads at some level to this perception of, oh, they were gone for a month. Well, some people's deed restrictions let them be gone for 90 days every year, and it's not the same, as long as you're getting your hours in during the time you're here. So just wanted to kind of add to, this is why, I've heard the calls, I've seen the complaints, and sometimes they're very valid, and we appreciate people watching out for our program for us, but at the other side, a lot of times, these are investigated, and there's really nothing there.
Mayor Richards, that's an excellent point, because that does precede my involvement, and that is absolutely true. Multiple deed restrictions out there can create some confusion. And your other point, I think, was good, too, that...
Just weren't staffed for the work.
Yep, yep, we certainly do that.
Oh, and then Bill has a comment now.
Oh, sure, yes.
I think I'm jumping in here at the appropriate time, because I doubt you're going to talk about this. But firstly, you've done a lot of great work on this, and I appreciate it, and I'm pleased with the direction that things are going in. My first question slash comment is, are we sending an invoice to people for hours spent enforcing violations and non-responses and things like that?
We are not.
Can we?
I doubt it, but that's a good point. I mean, that's staff time, that's our job. I don't know how that would work, billing people for staff time to the city of Aspen, but yeah, that's an interesting idea.
You know, I think about it, like, if you make a planning application or a building application, there's fees that are associated with it. I think that's something worth looking into.
Okay.
Obviously, we're not going to do that if you're not found in violation, but if you are found in violation, fundamentally, I don't have an issue with that. I think that's appropriate.
We do have, if it does go to the hearing officer, and then to the APSHA Board, that incurs legal costs, and that could, that portion sometimes is, the court orders that to be taken care of, but actual staff time at this point, we are not recouping, but that is an interesting idea that we'll...
I'd appreciate the thought.
And just to jump in on that same question with you, I was wondering if we had a copy of the fine schedule. So when people are found to be in some level of violation, they can receive a fine. I don't know if that fully covers staff time or not, but based on the seriousness, it could be $75, $300, $500, $1,000.
That's in the regs.
Yeah.
I don't think we can pull it up right now, but that's in the regs, and that, those get imposed as part of...
When there is a violation.
By the hearing officer.
Yeah.
So that's part of, if it goes to the hearing officer, the hearing officer has the authority to impose that fine, not staff. So that's part of the...
When it's reached that level.
C punitive aspect of it.
So just another summary.
That's great. Yeah, I don't want to solve for the policymaking right here, but something I appreciate you looking into, and, you know, adding further deterrent from at least purposefully, you know, purposeful violations, I should say. And then one comment that could come at any time, but may as well say now, I would encourage you to spread the word on this, on what you're doing here. And I know Matthew writes a great, and Liz sometimes writes these great op-eds or columns in the newspaper, and, you know, I don't know if you do an APSHA newsletter or not, but maybe something that gets featured in the city newsletter, like, this work is the right thing to do, and it should, everyone should be aware of it, and it should serve as a deterrent.
Right.
Those are great points. And if I can just put a little summary on that, when something does go to district court, and Tom Smith has to get involved, it gets very expensive, but written into most of the deed restrictions are, the winner has to pay attorney's fees. And so that remedy can happen at that end, when we're talking very big dollars that we're spending. The second thing with the fine schedule, when we issue a notice of violation, we indicate, because we find the violation, but it is not a final agency action. So we can indicate the types of fines that have been triggered by those violations. But as Matthew said, until we get to the hearing officer, and sometimes the board, when we reach a final agency action that is appealable to district court, we can't enforce those fines. Like, it has to be the hearing officer or otherwise, but they're on the books, and they can be significant. They get into the $4,000, $5,000 range, and, you know, those are for the most egregious. The problem is things like failing to do your affidavit. We are an administrative body, and we still have to go through the notice of violation and the opportunity to appeal. And so it would be a little nicer if we could just have those fines attached when something happens, but we have to give due process for that, so. But I like your other ideas, too, and we need to continue to think about...
Yeah, maybe there's some hybrid, too, right? Like, if you don't get an alarm permit, and your alarm goes off, you know, you get a bill from the police department, so you...
And there's licensing penalties.
If you don't file your affidavit on time, why can't you send a bill for that, a penalty for that, for something that's so binary, so black and white, right? Like, this is your responsibility, you've agreed to fulfill this responsibility. If you don't do it, this is what happens, kind of thing.
And...
Yeah, I'd encourage you to explore that, too.
Well, for sure, and if I might, the affidavit is a perfect example. We send 1,300 affidavits out in April, and they're due at the end of May. We send another email out in July. We send another email out in September, and we finally send a letter out in November, due December 13th. And we still had 486 people that we sent the letter to.
That's so unacceptable in my eyes.
And so we are thinking of, how do we make a perfunctory act in the affidavit, and now we've added a few documents? How do we make that, look, that's all you got to do, you're an amazing...
incurs legal costs, and that could, that portion sometimes is, the court orders that to be taken care of, but actual staff time, at this point, we are not recouping, but that is an interesting idea that we'll...
I'd appreciate the thought.
And just to jump in on that same question with you, I was wondering if we had a copy of the fine schedule? So, when people are found to be in some level of violation, they can receive a fine. I don't know if that fully covers staff time or not, but based on the seriousness, it could be $75, $300, $500, $1,000.
That's in the regs.
Yeah.
I don't think we can pull it up right now, but that's in the regs, and that, those get imposed as part of it.
When there is a violation.
By the hearing officer.
Yeah.
So, that's part of, if it goes to the hearing officer, the hearing officer has the authority to impose that fine, not staff. So, that's part of the...
When it's reached that level.
C punitive aspect of it.
So, just another summary.
That's great. Yeah, I don't want to solve for the policymaking.
No, that's okay.
Right here, but something I appreciate you looking into, and, you know, adding further deterrent from, at least purposefully, you know, purposeful violations, I should say. And then, one comment that could come at any time, but may as well say now, I would encourage you to spread the word on this, on what you're doing here. And I know Matthew writes a great, and Liz sometimes writes these great op-eds or columns in the newspaper, and, you know, I don't know if you do an APSHA newsletter or not, but maybe something that gets featured in the city newsletter, like, this work is the right thing to do, and it should, everyone should be aware of it, and it should serve as a deterrent.
Great.
Those are great points. And if I can just put a little summary on that, when something does go to district court, and Tom Smith has to get involved, it gets very expensive. But written into most of the deed restrictions are, the winner has to pay attorney's fees. And so, that remedy can happen at that end, when we're talking very big dollars that we're spending. The second thing with the fine schedule, when we issue a notice of violation, we indicate, because we find the violation, but it is not a final agency action. So, we can indicate the types of fines that have been triggered by those violations. But as Matthew said, until we get to the hearing officer, and sometimes the board, when we reach a final agency action, that is appealable to district court, we can't enforce those fines. Like, it has to be the hearing officer or otherwise, but they're on the books, and they can be significant. They get into the $4,000, $5,000 range, and, you know, those are for the most egregious. The problem is things like failing to do your affidavit. We are an administrative body, and we still have to go through the notice of violation and the opportunity to appeal. And so, it would be a little nicer if we could just have those fines attached when something happens, but we have to give due process for that, so. But I like your other ideas, too, and we need to continue to think about...
Yeah, maybe there's some hybrid, too, right? Like, if you don't get an alarm permit, and your alarm goes off.
Yes.
You know, you get a bill from the police department, so you...
And there's licensing penalties.
If you don't file your affidavit on time, why can't you send a bill for that, a penalty for that, for something that's so binary, so black and white, right? Like, this is your responsibility, you've agreed to fulfill this responsibility. If you don't do it, this is what happens, kind of thing.
And...
Yeah, I'd encourage you to explore that, too.
Well, for sure, and if I might, the affidavit is a perfect example. We send 1,300 affidavits out in April, and they're due at the end of May. We send another email out in July. We send another email out in September. And we finally send a letter out in November, due December 13th. And we still had 486 people that we sent the letter to.
That's so unacceptable in my...
And so, we are thinking of, how do we make a perfunctory act in the affidavit, and now we've added a few documents? How do we make that, look, that's all you got to do, you're in amazing housing? And so, I appreciate your thoughts, because we're on the same wavelength with that.
Yeah, I agree with you, and I think it's worth investigating. I do wonder whether, on the affidavit alone, the fact that it's by email as opposed to comes in the mail makes a difference. I mean, because people go, oh, I changed my email address, oh, it went into junk mail, oh, and here, I never got it.
Yep.
And so, that's, you know, I don't want to have to go to a program, we have to mail to 1,400 people and pay for the postage expense of that.
Well, that's nothing money.
But that way, you know it's been returned, they're not there, and, you know, people who don't respond to certified mail, or things like this, but, so, I just want to...
It's a balance.
It's a balancing act about, and that's why, again, they're not fined the first, after the first 60 days, if the affidavit hasn't come back in yet, because there are these glitches with doing things by email that are not necessarily, I never got it.
Well, do both.
I mean, I have given my correct address to Hunter Creek condominiums five times. I still cannot get my bill of my monthly dues to come to my email, and now I've given them my husband's address, so he gets it and he forwards it to me. I mean, it's just absurd how times can be with weird emails, so...
And our last one was via regular mail.
Right. Well, that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
And I can see that certainly as you get to the closeout.
But they're coming back, too.
Yeah.
Some of them are...
And you know something's wrong.
So, our work is ahead, but that's just part of being in a program like this, and trying to enforce it. So, those were the random audits. We've suspended that program right now, just because we have now decided to add a document request every two years for the owners, and we had the first year of it this year, we're going to refine a little for '27, and we're going to see how that goes. We still have what are called audits for cause when something else comes up. Sometimes, this is something that is pervasive within a neighborhood. I've only done a handful, and they might have been able to handle it with an NOI, but we decided to do an audit instead. Sometimes, that's because we came up with the complaint internally, whereas a lot of the other notices of investigation, and those sort of investigations, come from complaints. And so, since we initiated ourselves, we called it an audit and sent it out that way. The last one, it has been resolved. It was under investigation, and they were out of compliance, so that one's done. Since I started, April 1st through the end of September 25, we had 452 compliance actions. That's a lot, but we got it down to 21. Some of that was some old stale stuff that we had to clean out when I first came on board. Others were a bunch of notices of violation we had to send out following the 2023 affidavit. We'll see what those numbers do after the 2025 affidavit, so. But as I said, as of today, we have 21 on the books right now. That will increase through the month of December, but that's the goal. We need to, we want a steady rate. We don't want to have a lot of things out there, and as I get better at the system, and as we work better as a team.
So, you're saying of the 452 compliance actions, a chunk of those were just not getting their affidavit back, as opposed to 452 were potential not living in the units? I mean, when you say you cleared out...
Of that number, we had to open notices of violation for due process following the 2023 affidavit.
Not being turned in.
So, yes, and so...
Okay, no, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, right around 100, I believe.
Mostly so big about affidavits as opposed to other...
Yes, ma'am. So, about 352 came from complaints, or were on the books when I came in '23, and we worked through those.
Very good. That's a lot of work.
It's a good team. They're outstanding, just a good team.
Good.
Compliance trends. I will wrap up here. Some of the things that we are noticed, I noticed four things that I'd like to chat about. One, what we're doing is, and the reason I'd like to note these is because we want to create awareness out there, as I said before. One of the things we're seeing is transfer of title. And there is all the rage to put your home in a trust for your children, and you don't have to go through probate, and that's everywhere right now, and a lot of personal attorneys are telling people about that. Unfortunately, most of our deed restrictions require that they be deeded in the name of a human person, of a person that owns, and it needs to be in their personal name. And so, that's just a running down with a letter, and please handle that, and those mostly we can handle with letter. But we'd like to get it out there that, don't put us, don't go through the rigmarole and pay to get the title changed, when you're going to have to undo it if you continue to own that de-restricted unit. 75% income earned in Pecan County, a less significant issue, but we really want to ensure that our housing is for people that work here, that need to do their job here. Post-COVID, we saw this a little more often with people that were trying to put together different types of employment, just to kind of survive in the valley during COVID, when they couldn't work regular jobs. We see it also with people that kind of do a token job here, but they have rental income of rental units somewhere, maybe not even in Colorado, of $250,000 a year. So, those are the, that's the reason why we have that threshold income of 75%, because we really, the intent of the program is to house people that need to do their work here. Self-employed workers. We've had a cottage industry of that following COVID, and not from my personal experience, but from what I see happen, and the world is going more online and remote and work from home. That's a trend we need to kind of keep an eye on, but for right now, in the situation that we have, we need to toughen up, tighten up, I should say, the document requires for verification of self-employment. It's one of those situations where you have a little bit of a non-standard way of making your living. We don't say it is not correct, or it's not worthy, but what we are going to say is, you got to give us a little more information. With a W-2 in your taxes, we can pretty much figure out you worked 40-hour weeks, or you worked full-time, and where your income came from. With some of the less traditional self-employed types of roles, we are going to require a little more. So, when we revamped the 2025 regulations, we really made it specific that you need to come up with a work log to verify the date you worked, the hours you worked, your client or the job, the task you performed, and where you performed it as well. We're not getting as much pushback as I thought on that. People sort of understand what that means, and I think that they appreciate. A lot of self-employed people that are following saying, I see why you have to do this, and I appreciate you doing that. Other folks, it does kind of weed out, and we've had a couple of unit turnovers, because they just couldn't, they couldn't support, they weren't working. And you hate doing that, but we have to keep the system fair for everybody, particularly the people that are working hard. So, that's one of the things we've done, and it seems like it's working and doing as it is intended, the way we rewrote it in the regs.
And the APSHA board, I believe it was last year, put a lot of work into looking at the self-employed criteria for the regulations, so I just want to recognize John's work. And I don't think Christine was there yet, but they did put a lot of work into actually formalizing what we need to do for self-employed individuals.
Do we have any sort of template that we give them?
We tried not to do that. We put out the examples and the regulations, but we didn't want, we wanted to reflect what people already had as much as possible, and not provide a standard model, because, you know, these are usually quite different, well, they can be quite different businesses. So, we did discuss that, but we decided in the end to have a clear list of things.
Just have a clear list of what needs to be included.
But we didn't say, this is the template you should fill out. We talked about that, but we decided against it.
Okay. Bill?
I was thinking along the same lines, Rachel, and the only thing I would add, I understand your response, maybe some tools that people could use to be able to efficiently provide you the information that you need, so. I can't recall the name, there's some kind of time-tracking log software thing that I had experienced with years ago, but to whatever extent you can put together a list of tools.
Oh, tangible types of...
Yeah, you know, for $10 a year, you can subscribe to this service that will log your hours and which job you're doing, and whatever, or allow you to do so, I should say, and get us the information that we need to be able to verify this in a format that's acceptable to us. So, I get that you don't want to provide the exact template, but give them some kind of nudge in the right direction.
That's a great idea. I think we do mention, like, spreadsheet to kind of get them thinking that way. It's interesting, though, I've received very few, well, and I don't do the qualifications, Matty would see a lot more than me, but I've seen very few commercially prepared. It really is a calendar or a list, and, but with some encouragement, we do get them to fill out, and you get a sense, too, when you start to see some of their bank accounts and things, whether they're getting things by Venmo and not paying taxes, and so, there's a lot of considerations to make, and our job is to be fair, and to recognize that this valley in particular has a very long history of very kinds of work, and it's just endemic to a ski town as well, or an outdoor town. We're really not just a ski town anymore.
Getting off topic a little bit.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm saying, I'm about to, but I think since we did those regulations with the self-employment criteria more clearly laid out, I think I'm speaking well on behalf of the qualifications people. It's been a lot easier for them, and it has given them something to point to. We've had, you know, before that, we were getting screenshots of Venmo transactions with names scrubbed out, and, you know, that's not helpful at all. So, we really have done a good job with formalizing it, and I think it's working much better.
Very nice. Bill?
One further thought there. I'm trying to put myself in these shoes. And I think I could accomplish that moving forward, but it would be very difficult for me to accomplish it moving backwards.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, almost 100% of the work, if not 100% of the work that I do, would qualify as local work. I certainly work 1,500 hours a year, maybe double that.
Need a vacation.
But I'd have a really hard time giving you that information, because I haven't been tracking it. So, how do, you know, for someone who's qualifying for the first time versus someone renewing, do we have a different set of criteria?
I don't think we have a different set, but I think we do a good job with recognizing that you're pulling it together for the first time, and then going forward, it's different. I mean, Matty, you know, she has strict standards, but she also has some flexibility based on documentation. I think she does a good job of that.
Okay, so that'd be another good thing to spread the word on, you know, for people that are thinking about qualifying for the first time, and that happen to be self-employed, is how do we prepare them for that? You know, it's much easier for a lawyer to do that, who tracks their hours as a sort of natural factor of their business, as opposed to, you know, someone who does all sorts of things, but never tracks their time.
Right, exactly. Okay, please continue.
And then, just the last little trend that we're seeing, again, is the not residing in the unit, and the big epiphany for me was, wow, site visits really work, as I said before. To be able to get one-on-one with the person in their home, and speak frankly about what the violations are going on, and what's going on in their life, and come to a thing. So, that's something that, in the future, we're going to start to do that more. It's just a time saver. It can happen way in the beginning of everything, and save a lot of rigmarole, and get everybody on the same page with what's going on and why they're not in their unit. Coming up is the Bionell affidavit. That's what's going to happen in the next month or two for me, and working with Anka, who's kind of put it on board, it's kind of getting to the compliance end of that. And then, we will sit down after that and kind of come up with next steps on how to perhaps do it more efficiently in '27. I think it's always going to have some growing pains with it, but we need to continue to work on that, to try to really get owners back in the fold here, to just say, look, we're asking twice, every two years.
Yeah.
Complaints, they're coming in. We have online, and little scraps of paper that are shoved through the post door, and calls, and all sorts of things. The people that are usually brought up in the complaints say, you know, it's so unfair, anonymous, and we try to be really honest and say, look, we're a very small office, and it's not ratting out your neighbor, although it is, to a certain extent, on some of that. But the other one is, we just don't have eyes and ears and out there, and we will investigate everything from scratch. It just points us in a direction, and our first letter to the person is, hi, this is not an accusation of a violation, we want to give you the opportunity to tell us what's going on. And so, one of my personal goals is to remember that I'm working with people, that it's their lives, it's their jobs, it's their homes. And I think, as long as we continue to put that out on front, we can be rigid with our enforcement in terms of following the regulations and the deed restriction, but we also have to remember we're working with real people, and I think that combination together is going to be the best thing as we move forward in compliance.
Okay. Other council members have comments or questions, things to add? John?
Yeah, I just want to say thanks for all your hard work. In the two and a half years I've been on the APSHA board, what's struck me about the organization is that where APSHA is asked to be strict, and it also has to be compassionate, and those things are kind of at odds with each other. But I got to say, also, over the last two and a half years, it's just been a steady stream of debunking or discrediting some of the myths and bad faith assumptions that people had about the program, and that's due to your hard work, so thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Agreed. I think this goes a long way in adding transparency to the program to reduce some of those feelings in the community when you have information to prove otherwise. I had two questions. One, with the compliance, the compliance cases, just out of curiosity, how many of those are reported anonymously, or are most of them found out through compliance review or affidavit review?
That was a follow-up I had after we met in October, and I have not gotten to it yet. Part of what happens in HomeTrack is how things are, you know, information in, information out. And so, I think to try to put those numbers together now would be premature, because I've only been putting the information in myself for those, actually, that's a bad way to put it. I've gotten better at putting the information more consistently in, so if I tried to pull those numbers now, I have more confidence in the numbers I've put in in the last year that might say that. And some of the things that come in on scraps of paper, we don't always, I didn't always in the beginning record those as anonymous, I just recorded it as a complaint. So, part of that is my own unfamiliarity with the system, but those types of numbers, I think, are very important, and we're working to try to make sure that we can come up with that kind of metric, at least percentage-wise, so we can understand where the bulk of the complaints are coming. So, thank you for, it's on my list, but thank you for reminding me.
You're dealing with a lot of information.
No, we're all good. I got nothing else to do.
And the second question, I'm not advocating or pushing for this, but we get emails, and I get comments sometimes about people volunteering, and how that works into qualification hours, and I don't want to muddy the waters, but do you hear that from people applying, that they'd like to see volunteer hours in the community go to some percentage of their work history?
I think that would go to my...
I think I have heard it, but it's not something that pops up.
Frequently.
Frequently.
Okay.
And it's in the regulations, obviously, now that it's not permitted, that volunteer, or, you know, there's the people that do, like, the information on the mountain, like, I teach, so I get, you know, but, and they're volunteer hours, but I spend, you know, 20 hours a week, and we're like, I know, and it's for the community, and it's wonderful, but unfortunately, we have to have the people that are employed for now. But I think, like I was saying before, in terms of, work is changing in the work from home and the things that we're doing. One of the verifications of self-employment is, do you have an office space in town? You know, that's becoming less. And so, I think those sorts of things, we don't want to table them. We want to keep, or I guess, I don't know, I'm not using the words right tonight, but I think we want to keep them in the back of our mind, because as things change, that might be a consideration for down the line. We also have a robust, I hate to say senior, but older population that could technically absolutely be retired, and they're still out there working, which is a wonderful thing in the community, and they don't need it for the qualification anymore, unless they haven't been in the system for 10 years and stuff, so. Volunteer hours are very important amongst our community, and we don't see a way for it right now. And I think mostly that is due, we have such a limited resource, that we really need to reserve it for those people that have to work their jobs in the city.
Yeah, and that makes sense.
Yeah, but it's an excellent...
I just didn't know if there was this undercurrent of people saying, I do all the side work, so.
Yeah, no, we're not seeing it.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you have anything to add, or anybody else? Because I want to make sure. I just want to say, I know you're dealing with a tough job, when sometimes a complaint can be more about a personal issue between two neighbors... when sometimes a complaint can be more about a personal issue between two neighbors than really a violation of any sort. But we do have to look into everything.
Yes.
And as I said, I'm really proud, as others have expressed, that the office itself and the professionalism and the staffing for the load of work we're asking out of the agency is really coming up to speed. I wanted to ask about the out of the OEZs, the ones that are violations for owning property out of the area. And if you don't have the information now, that's fine. We can look into it again later. But I'm wondering, is that they had a unit out in the in the zone before they applied and got an APSHA unit, and it was only found out later they owned property? Or did they did they own property before the deed restrictions or the area changed? You know, because I think it's been expanded over time to start including additional areas.
That's correct.
And I'd imagine it couldn't really be retroactive to someone who, depending on their deed restriction and when they got their deed restriction, if it was retroactive. But I I I know that's been an issue people have raised over the years of, why can't I invest? And it's like, well, you can't invest in property. You can buy an empty vacant lot
That's correct.
to build a future home. But you can't build or buy a rental property down valley while you're benefiting from an APSHA home up here.
I I believe that the OEZ properties, they are in advance of applying. And sometimes a family member dies and they receive it in the middle while they're there. The regulations are are very pointed of how we need to handle those things. I'm not seeing a lot coming up. And honestly, I think the economy has a lot to do with that. I think that a lot of folks in our housing are working really hard to make sure they can stay in the valley even at the subsidized prices that we have for housing. And there's probably not a lot of extra cash for anything else at this point.
Yeah, no, I just keep an eye on that one.
For sure, we will.
I'd love to know kind of how how those cases evolve. I'm sure they're all of different origin.
And as you say, we always go back to the deed restriction. That was the first lesson I learned. And you have to start at the deed restriction and see what's going on with there. Because you're right, the OEZ has expanded beyond. But if you're in Aspen Village and, you know, your your deed restriction is only to Glenwood Springs, then, you know, rifle, there's not much we can do about it because we're following your deed restriction.
Yep. Then I just was going to comment briefly. Some of us, maybe all of us, attended the Aspen Chamber Resort Association kind of spring conference over at the St. Regis Hotel in the ballroom. It was maybe February going into March. But they did a survey that actually of their employers and employees. So it was kind of both being asked about a whole number of issues. But they asked about housing and compliance and should there be vigorous enforcement? I'm not sure I'm phrasing exactly the same. But they got, I think, 100% in both categories from both employees and employers. And the public support for having a fair, evenly administered, honest compliance system, I think, is something that's really supported by this community. Folks will have their suspicions about a neighbor or this or that. And they'll call in. And sometimes you'll probably get calls a dozen times about the same unit over time. And they just have an older deed restriction, you know? It's not as if it's something new that we're finding about. But I just wanted to encourage you continuing on. I I think we all saw the story in the Daily News. And it it was frustrating to me because I know that the cases themselves were discussed through APSHA as to why we had to do this. But all that really got reported in the story was the losing plaintiffs who lost their court case attorney being able to get the headline that something's wrong there. Well, what was wrong was his clients. And that's why the District Court, beyond our hearing officer, agreed with us. And it's just really funny when the the lawyer fighting for someone who's in violation gets all the headlines and the quotes and the people who are having to do the tough job of enforcing do not. And so I really appreciate your patience and your diligence and hard work through that and serving our community in this way.
Thank you very much.
And this is Emily, who joined us last year as a housing analyst, policy analyst.
Thanks, Matthew. Hi, it's nice to meet those of you that I don't know. As Matthew said, I'm the newish housing policy analyst. I've been with APSHA about a year. And I'm here today to talk to you about the capital reserve studies that APSHA paid for for participating APSHA HOAs. We'll just talk about some APSHA goals and intended outcomes and overview of what we learned from the studies. And then we'll dive into what we've talked about a little bit with the APSHA board in terms of solutions and what is still to come with that. So the APSHA board made this a goal in their strategic plan that they did last spring or early summer. And they decided to partner with HOAs and stakeholders on maintenance strategies and approach to achieve a well-maintained inventory by 2030. And then some other intended outcomes, I think, is that our housing remains affordable, both to current residents and to future residents. So being able to sort of balance what people are facing now and keeping things affordable for future. And keeping our workforce housed is a big one. And then this second bullet here, maintaining reserve funds. So this kind of taps into some things that we've heard from lenders to, in order to get financing, they said things that they're looking for are that reserve accounts are at 10% of the budget. And all those immediate safety concerns identified in the studies are addressed. And then I added preventative maintenance and budgeting and hoping that owners will understand maintenance costs and in particular, understand when they're buying an APSHA home, understand maintenance costs here in Aspen because that's kind of this whole, whole own thing, yeah. And then just to provide some support from HOAs because what we're hearing from them is that they they need that from us. And that these big capital expenditures that they're facing are feeling really unaffordable. Just a quick. History, in 2011, APSHA also funded capital reserve studies. And then a joint work group was formed in 2016 between city, county, and APSHA. There was, I believe, much discussion with that group. The APSHA board had some policy discussions in 2018. And then my understanding is that those talks sort of fizzled without any big action, I guess. And then APSHA started updating the 2011 capital reserve studies in 2024. And those were completed last spring, May of 2025. Just an overview. We decided, well, I should say, I wasn't around yet. But I'll just say, we decided that there were 50 eligible HOAs. And I'll talk a little bit more on the next slide about participation and why we decided some HOAs were ineligible to participate in this and some weren't. At the end of 2023, RD3 was the company that was contracted to complete the work. And they began their onsite visits the summer of 2024 and completed all the reports by the spring of 2025. APSHA allocated $170,000 for the studies. And the work included these 10-year capital reserve studies with summary reports. And, yeah, really just a budgeting tool for these HOAs. But the added benefit is that we gained some information from doing these, too. And participation. So like I said, just a budgeting tool for the HOAs. We decided there were, of the 50 eligible HOAs, that that added up to 729 units being ineligible. And those units or ineligible HOAs were decided to be ineligible because they were largely single-family homes. So their HOAs were going to be covering different or less things. Some units were ineligible because there was a single deed restricted unit or only a few deed restricted unit in a majority free-market complex. So we decided that those were ineligible to participate in these studies as well. And HOAs were not required to participate. This was a benefit that APSHA offered. And if people wanted to participate, they they could elect to. Some HOAs told us that they declined because they had recently completed a capital reserve study. So they didn't feel like they needed another one right away. And some of the HOAs that did not participate are some of the larger ones in the APSHA inventory. So those ones typically have property managers. So maybe they felt like their, you know, budgeting and idea of what was going on at their HOA, like they had a better grasp on that. The number of units that were eligible that opted out of participating was 573. And those complexes that didn't participate were, like I said, those bigger ones like Burlingame, Centennial, and Hunter Creek all opted out. 391 units participated out of a total eligible 964. Some of those ineligible HOAs that are those single-family homes would be like Aspen Village, Lazy Glen, the North Forty, those ones. And so I did a little bit of extrapolating just to give us a prediction of the ones that didn't participate, what their expected capital expenses might be. And I based that on the studies that we had. So that would be, you know, assuming a number of things. But my prediction was the ones that didn't participate would see a $7 to $12 million capital expenditures over the next 10 years. And you'll see here.
Is that the parallel number with the number who did participate? Ends up being close at around 12 million?
I, yeah, so the ones that did participate was fewer units, so 391. And 27 of the 50 eligible, so a little over half of the eligible HOAs. And their projected capital burden, we learned from the reserve studies, is $8.7 million over the next 10 years. So with my extrapolated from the ones that didn't participate, I estimate all those multifamily units needing $15 to $20 million in capital repairs coming up. The good news is that half of the HOAs are predicted to be in a positive balance. And that was based off their current reserve contributions. If they, you know, did all the repairs recommended on the studies and didn't have, you know, some sort of other catastrophic event added to that, it was predicted if they kept everything the same that they would be in a positive balance. So I think that was a positive takeaway for us, that they are contributing and doing okay with some of this. And the other thing that we learned was that the RD3 who we contracted with, they said that for the age of these properties, their condition is pretty average. As you can see in the chart, he said 17 were what he qualified as average. There were four that he classified as in poor condition and one in very good condition. And then others average to good. So I think the APSHA board's takeaway from this was that this is better than they had anticipated. I think that they thought it was going to be much, much worse than this. And I think that that can be true at the same time as what we're hearing from people is that these repairs are really expensive and that they could use some help. So that's kind of what's going on there. One thing that I think is worth noting as we think of ways to help them is that most of the capital burden is the building envelope. So those were things like the roofs, the siding, the foundation, the buildings themselves made up the large majority, almost 70% of that projected capital burden. And those health and safety items were a lot smaller. So those, they tended to be smaller items, easier fixes. And the total across all 27 HOAs that participated that were classified as health and safety items was only around $160,000. So hopefully, those things are, those are the things that are getting addressed first by these HOAs. And then hopefully, they're able to use these as some planning to help figure out when to complete some of those other big-ticket items so that they can budget for that. We asked that. We kind of categorized that maybe solutions could fall into these three categories. Education and resources for HOAs, policy changes that APSHA might make to support or incentivize the HOAs to complete these repairs and not defer maintenance, to do those preventative maintenance things, and then also programmatic support. The APSHA board told us that they thought we should prioritize education and resources. And we already started doing that as we sort of rebooted the HOA education seminar series last summer and have had one of those seminars each month since June, or I think since June, and had various topics and speakers come and talk to HOAs. And those are all recorded and posted on the APSHA website for people to access if they missed them. I think that the Goal, sort of overarching goal there is that we can put all the these informational videos into a really great spot on the newly designed APSHA website and have sort of an HOA hub where people can go and get the information that they might be looking for. Or if they're new to their HOA, they can go there and learn about these things, about what it's like to be a part of an APSHA HOA, what they should be doing in terms of maintenance and budgeting and those sort of things. What other things we had were some insurance talk. We had the fire department come and talk about fire mitigation stuff. So I think doing some really great things already under education and resources. But we have talked about some other things that we can do, just expanding that so that really HOAs can get from us the information that they need. Some of the things we talked about with the APSHA board were, how can we also get the HOAs to start talking to each other, share information, maybe pool some of their resources if they can get on the same insurance for discounted rates, those sort of things? And bullets two through four on here, that, those things will all fall onto that, this sort of new HOA hub on the newly designed APSHA website that Meg is working very hard at designing right now. And I think one thing that might be really cool that we've talked about is this APSHA homeowner 101 class. So all APSHA owners do a homebuyer ed class before they can purchase. But those are, those classes are really broad and some good information about homeownership in general, but not necessarily about like what it about like what it means to be an APSHA owner. So we're thinking that we can have a video or a presentation or something that really gets the point to people about what it's like to own an Aspen, what maintenance costs might actually be here, what, you know, what the APSHA program's all about, what to expect, that kind of thing.
That's a, that's in the APSHA strategic plan as well, that's a goal.
Very nice.
And then this last bullet on here, HOA attorney office hours. So what we're hoping to do this spring is have Molly Foley Healy, the lawyer who's talked at some of these HOA education seminars, come and have scheduled like one-on-one sessions with HOAs who sign up in order to help them update their HOA docs. And so we're still working on planning that with her, but we're thinking it will be in either March or April, hopefully.
And we originally thought that would be kind of a drop-in situation, and Molly said that would be a huge waste of everybody's time, so we were like, okay, gotcha. So people do need to sign up, and they do need to provide her some documents to review beforehand, so that, that does take-
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That is a bit more admin-heavy than, you know, perhaps I naively thought it would be, but we're working on that.
We'll have to see how it works out.
Yeah.
Yeah. And this slide came from a previous presentation, so a number of these have already happened, but this is just here to give you all sort of an idea of some of the things that we've started to do for these HOAs. The second HOA newsletter that Meg started will be coming out in January, and we plan to do more of these sort of HOA meetups to get them, talking to them, talking to us, all that. And then I'll just say the other thing is, one of my biggest takeaways from the capital reserve studies was that truly, each HOA is truly in its own unique situation. You know, some HOAs have 30 different units and some have four. And so their capital expenditures are going to be vastly different, their ability to come up with money for these things is going to be vastly different. And then some of them are mixed category, some of them are complexes with all category four units. So there's really just different things going on for each HOA. One that we knew of, you know, they just recently took a loan out to replace their roof and paused their reserve contributions, and so their reserve fund is completely depleted now from doing this repair. So I think that there's some opportunities there for ways that we can support them of like, as you do your repairs, maybe we can have a program where we match some funds so that your reserve doesn't get completely depleted down to zero, and you can still be eligible for financing and those sort of things. But the things that we are working on now are if there's more educational resources we could provide to them, and what sort of policy changes could we bring to the APSHA board early next year that might incentivize HOAs to be completing some of these repairs and deferring less of their maintenance. Happy to answer any questions?
Who wants to ask a question first? Bill?
Mine's not so much a question, just a thought to address your last point. Thank you for the nice presentation, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Good progress here. I've said this before, I'll continue to say it, I think the biggest policy change that we can and should make is to somehow allow people to recapture their investments in their, in their HOA capital expenditures. The nuance and the challenge is figuring out what's sort of necessary and what's unnecessary, you know, aesthetic and I, I don't think it's as big of a challenge as we might fear because I think people don't really want to spend money on things that aren't practical in this context, but it is, it is a nuance and it is a challenge. But I, you know, taking care of the exterior of your, of your common areas is as important as upgrading the flooring or the bathrooms on the inside, if not more important in certain circumstances. And we've got to find a way to make it, to financially incentivize or at least remove the disincentive to do so. And I think right now there's definitely a disincentive. So I, I highly encourage figuring out that policy, and I'm super supportive of that. Thanks.
I agree. We're hard at work on that one, so hopefully.
I have a few comments as well, but I don't want to go first if anybody else other than I think we need to look at it, it's both helping the HOAs and helping the owners perhaps via policy. And one of the challenges I've always seen is how do you capture, or how do you utilize your equity that you may develop over appreciation over years? So when someone first moves into a unit and at a 3% or less rate, it can take you five, 10 years to develop enough equity, unless you're making prepayments, to be able to even take a loan out and use any of that equity, whether it's putting it into the capital reserves or putting it into your own interior units improvements. And so I've really thought a lot about how, how do we work with that? I mean, we're all, and I've called for a housing summit, you know, I think we're going to try and schedule something next year with the county, but we're living within a framework that's 50 years old from when they started the program. And they thought that, well, if we just allow 3% or less appreciation a year, wages will just go 3% a year, everything's going to stay nice and even, and it'll be the same type of employee who can buy this unit when these guys sell. And of course, it was a very wonderful simplistic scheme that didn't really work out. And so questions of, of the equity, I think, and the appreciation are a little bit of a key to helping the homeowners do a better job. And I, I'm not sure exactly what form that takes, but you know, how do you tap your equity to use it, whether it's for the big special assessment or for its interior? And what about, you know, I thought about, well, what if I was selling a unit, and I never used my 10%, and so I'm just yelling at, at the standard $200,000, should we maybe allow the next buyer to put $10,000 in if they'd like to and automatically raise that base price for them? So that, you know, your, your past people didn't do it, it's still in good enough condition to sell for the, you know, per what's allowed, but they never, they never made some basic improvements. Should we let that new buyer raise the base level for their appreciation and let them put $10,000 in that they recapture, kind of like what Bill's asking there too? So it's just a few things like that. And I, I thought, you know, if there, should there be a higher resale inspection standard for a unit when someone is moving to another APSHA unit?
Oh, yeah.
You know, because what we're really seeing a lot of is, and I see it, I live at Hunter Creek, it's an old rental project that was turned into ownership, and there were some three-bedroom units nearby me that turned over repeatedly once Burlingame 3 came online. And it was to get away from the super-high HOA dues which we have, which will barely be able to keep the repairs going, you know, quite honestly. But I, I thought that maybe you shouldn't be able to get the year 25 years' worth of lottery chances if you're not really readdressing occupancy. You already have a unit, that is how you've been able to build up 20 years' worth of work history, because you already have a unit. And now you're going from one, two-bedroom to a nice new two-bedroom, because you had priority in the lottery. So you could leave all your deferred maintenance behind, and you get a nice low one. And so yes, if you're readdressing occupancy up or down, you need a three-bedroom now, you need only a one-bedroom now, sure, have all 20 chits. And if you want to go into a lottery for a better two-bedroom, sure, go into that lottery, but you only get one chip. You're, you're as if you're new, because you are already housed and you're already benefiting from the system. And I think that would help change the scale of the age of people we see buying the units, when they're able to get into the units for the first time, not taking away someone's chances entirely to go for the prime unit over there at Snyder Park, but not giving you 20 chances or 10 chances or whatever the number is, because you've lived here for 20 years in APSHA housing already. And so I, I think some things like that. And so that's why I'm saying maybe if you're reselling one APSHA unit to get into another, you should have a higher inspection of what condition you're leaving that unit in, instead of just getting away. The other types of things, I've kind of wondered, you know, even just taking your numbers apart, APSHA generally sees around 60 resales a year, give or take a year. If, if $10,000 was going to be allocated, say, from our funds to, to a given unit for the special reserve assessment they're going to be facing, because this complex is not taking care of their problems, you know, that, that would be $600,000 a year, over 60 units. But you, you wouldn't be selling to someone who's going to be hit almost immediately with a $2,000 special assessment or $5,000 or whatever it's going to be because of this debt. And I've really wondered, having had my real estate license in the past, if, you know, APSHA could face some liability, because we didn't disclose, we didn't know to disclose this unit has a looming debt of $300,000 to redo all these things, you know? And it, it, you know, a real estate agent has an obligation to tell a future buyer what they know or what they should have known, you know? You can't escape that liability. And so I, I've been a little worried about that. And I've, you know, these are just, you know, out of the blue, and that's why I'd like to have a larger policy discussion with all those who are involved. But how do we really work our way out of it? Because if there's an incentive that if you bring your HOA from being, you know, poor to, poor to good, whatever, all the way up to good, we'll give you a bonus of $25,000 to keep you up, as long as you don't lower your, your assessments. Or, you know, can, can we create incentives for people as well to do better, or rewards for those who have? And so I'd like to take some, some big looks at those sort of things. And, you know, it's kind of like what Bill was talking about there to begin with. And I, I don't know that, you know, if you're in a free-market condo HOA and you make some improvements to the boiler, I don't know that you get to necessarily pull that back out of your resale price. You know, it, it's, it's a little 50/50. I don't know if you could have sold it if, if they knew the boiler was already bad and you didn't really have hot water in your building. And so it, it's, it's a little bit of a 50/50 as to how much should be left in for making these larger capital improvements. Have you made a capital improvement that's going to last 50 years? Maybe you get something back out. But if it's a capital improvement from something you've neglected for 20 years and never put your money in to do the re-roofing, you know, it, so it's a real balance there that, you know, I, I'd be willing to look at it, but it's not, it's not cut and dry, and it's a, it's a difficult equation. Even just because if you improve the interior of your unit now, and it's adding extra cabinet space or something like that, so you get some credit for what you've done, it's depreciated back down over time. So it can depreciate back down to zero. So someone may have put something into the major capital reserve, but if it was a roof and it's depreciated down 12 years, I don't know that there's much that they get to recover back out of it.
And I wasn't suggesting dollar-for-dollar, 100% recovery necessarily, and I didn't want to give any parameters, because I know they're putting a lot of thought into this. I, I, I just was using the comparison, you know, in your case, you used cabinets. Just like you're investing in cabinets, you could be investing in a new roof, and there should be some, a removal of the disincentive at the very least. So some way to justify that this isn't a bad idea to spend this money.
Right. Yeah, no, I, I can agree with that. I'm just trying to say, there's so many little nuances. I, I worry the most, almost, on some of the older conversion projects that were taken when developers brought in older units, and we've brought it up to speed, it's up to standards, but, you know, the bones might have been good a while ago, but I'm not so sure they're as solid now. So those are all my thoughts. I'd really like to, again, find ways that we incentivize people to move forward. And I, for one, am not looking at huge dollars, like tens of millions or fives a million, but I think there's a point at which there's going to need to be more than just education and policy. And it's more about making sure it's really doing the most, most bang for the muck and where it's really needed. So those are the things I'm looking at.
Thank you. I appreciate the input.
Thank you. Thank you all and the team for what you've done.
Is there any other questions or comments that might have come up from that? No, I think we're ready to be done with the meeting. Did you have anything, Pete, to announce?
Yeah, just two quick things from the council. One is there was an informational-only memo, just wanted to make sure you all saw that on the snowfall.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure everybody saw the informational-only memo, and it looks like everybody has, so that's great. And also, we did have an amendment to tomorrow's agenda that came out at 4 o'clock today. That's to do the mill levy resolution. Instead of having to schedule an extra meeting, we're trying to avoid a special meeting. The information came in on Saturday, and staff turned it around quickly, was able to get it in, pack it today. So you have that in your inbox as one additional item. So just wanted to point that out.
Great. Thank you. Bill?
I'm, I've been struggling throughout this whole meeting whether to bring up this snowpull or snowmaking thing or not. I'm so torn on it. I feel, it feels so hypocritical to me to condone it while we're penalizing the broader community for the current precipitation levels. But I also don't want to discourage, you know, what's a good event and good for our community. So I just wanted to at least share how I'm feeling about it and see how everyone else is feeling about it.
Yeah. You know, I, I kind of had the same thoughts, and fortunately, when I looked out the window, I saw that six inches of snow and thought, well, at least, you know, and, and from my experience with water, it's return flow. So it's going to return to the river, it won't return to our reservoir. And so I, I can understand that it's a bit of a challenge, but I, I do see it as a return flow, and I do see it as a great fundraiser for the hospital, which does great community I wish we had a little more water right now. And that's something, I, I have the same conflict, I guess, be what, I, I'd not enough to say call it off, but I did particularly like the conditions that our staff added, that if we have to do this in another year, we want to see these things set up. So it's, it's more professional, it's easier to do, it's more straightforward. So I was willing to accept that trade-off, that if they're willing to make those commitments for future years, we'll let it happen this year.
Yeah, I think I agree with you, and I think, I think it just makes me think that the way that we're evaluating these water shortages is wrong for today's weather patterns or climate or whatever you want to call it. We just need a different, different way of analyzing this. It's just like, this is becoming too frequent to be penalizing people from a rate standpoint and trying to change behavior in the short term. You know, we, I, maybe we need to change behavior in the short term, in the long term as opposed to short term. And we need to have a program that is more adaptable to changing weather conditions. I, I just don't like this thing where we're, we're in a stage two, we're in a stage one, stage three, no shortage, and it's just like constantly changing. People are paying different money to take the same shower. It just doesn't feel right to me.
I'm so glad you brought it up, Bill. I agree with your concerns. It's, I struggle with the amount of water that's being used to make snow for our mountains, and yet skiing is the lifeblood of our winter tourism. And how do we balance that? I mean, we're taking water out of the streams when these streams are at their lowest of the whole year. It's, there's some deep questions to be asked, but thanks for bringing it up.
I had the same concerns that you've all brought up, and just one thought moving forward, I know how hard it is to organize and plan for events, but maybe we suggest to them looking later in the year when there's more snow here, and because it looks like they've had to-
Do this.
-pull water several years in the round. We know December's-
Yep.
...shortening in snowfall, so looking later in the winter.
Yeah. Go ahead.
That's a good thought. Yeah, now, again, when I said I saw the six inches of snow, it's also seeing that's going to be 40 degrees next week, and it's all going to be melting into the streams, so we might have a little bit of a bypass. I think that's all then, if nobody has anything else they want to bring up. But thanks for bringing that up, Bill. That's why we've put it on the end of our work system agendas. If anybody, we are noticed to be able to bring up things in our information memos. Okay? Thank you very much, everyone, and thank you, Grassroots TV. Thank you very much, everyone, and thank you, Grassroots TV.